All the meetings were over. Um, first of the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognitions.
Yes, alright. So, you guys missed the last board meeting. We spent all kinds of time talking about the game and the excitement of it. But we have Coach Zulo here. Sam Zulo is the coach of the girls' team at Simsbury High School and members of the team. And we wanted to recognize you for your unbelievable achievement in winning the first ever state championship for girls' basketball at Simsbury High School. And just a wonderful accomplishment. I had got a chance to go. Um, I think a lot of our staff was there. It was just awesome. And thousands and thousands of people in just an amazing environment to see how you guys performed and you compete is incredible. I have a couple of fun facts that Mr. Penny sent our way that I wanted to share with members of the board and the public. First time that we got to the finals in school history, which is really cool, and the first title, as I had said. And then this is an unbelievable statistic. The best four-year winning percentage in school history. So, the seniors that came through and produced over a four-year period, seventy-seven and fifteen. I mean, what an accomplishment that is. First team in school history to be ranked in the polls the entire season, which is really cool. And held, people that know basketball and watch this team play, held opposing teams in the state tournament to twenty-five points under their tournament average. And then the two seniors that really led the way for the group, both one-thousand-point scorers, which is an amazing, amazing accomplishment for high school athletes. So, you know, I would say this, as a district, we preach about teamwork and collaboration. I've watched, I'm a basketball fan, I've watched a lot of basketball over the years. Girls, I've never seen a group of kids commit to each other, commit to a philosophy, and go out and really produce and make it happen at a high level. I mean, it is really incredible to watch the selflessness of this group of kids and then how it played out in such success. So, we talk about hard work equals achievement. This is a coaching staff and a group of kids that have certainly, certainly produced on that level and really exciting. So, with that, I will stop talking. Mr. Penny, you want to introduce this group to us a little bit? Coach Zulo or who do we have here?
Absolutely. I'll defer to Coach Zulo.
Okay.
He gets, I do the intros every night for the game, but I'll let Coach tell you if that's what I like to speak to. Certainly introduce everybody, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, so as you notice through our entire team here, but it's kind of springtime talk. One thing that we pride ourselves on is letting people be who they are in our program. And a lot of kids are playing spring sports right now and we're happy to see them do that and drive. You know, one of our best players in school history is also an all-state volleyball player and also an all-conference golf player as well. So, we have Amanda Gallagher, senior, Risa Looney, junior, and Alexa Gallagher, junior, and Coach Pretty Patia and Coach C. So, yeah, and. One more point on for you, since this just came off the wire today, very fitting that it got announced today, the all-state teams came out today. This is also the first time in school history that we've ever had two players make an all-state, and Amanda Gallagher and Olivia Jarvis, which is pretty cool.
That's really great. Sam, I'm going to throw you off. You've been the all-time winged coach in school history for the girls. So, congratulations.
We appreciate you guys having us here and we really appreciate all of the support across the board. Our youth program, which all these guys came through, has over six hundred people in it now. We couldn't do that without the support of being able to get in different gyms and being able to grow the program. And it takes a lot of space and commitment when you have that many people involved, so it really starts to take the community. So, really appreciate everybody's support and help with all of that and hopefully we'll be able to do it again in a few years and we'll have your daughter here, she's welcome. So, thank you guys for having us.
Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for having us.
Thanks all.
Congratulations.
That was fun.
Yeah.
Alright, with that, let's turn to public audience. Say hello here for public audience. Let's go onto communications. Oh, Matt, okay.
Yeah, at the high school this week, sorry, following week, we had the DEIB week, which I mentioned in our last meeting, but we were having a spirit rally on the first where we're going to have a performance from the gospel choir and the progression ensemble steel drum performance to kick off the week. And we will also be celebrating the girl basketball team and other winter sports accomplishments, which brings me to the next point. The girls' fencing saber team made it to the CT State Team Varsity Championship. They did not win, but it's the, one of the first times that they've ever made it to the championship. Yeah, so that's cool. And the robotics team will be competing in the New England District Championship at the Big E this weekend with a chance to qualify for Worlds at Houston, Texas. And if I remember, they haven't been to Worlds in, I think, five or more years, so there's, I spoke to one of the team members who says there's a pretty good chance that they did. And Henry James, as I mentioned last week, they finished up the SpongeBob musical with over sixty-one students performing in the, as crew members and as performers. And it's all of six shows. So, fabulous, fabulous show and good audience engagement and all that. That's it for me.
Yeah, Josh. Nothing this time.
Nope, I don't have anything.
Yeah, now, I just have a feeling that I could come back as a student since very high school and join the fencing team. This would be really something in my next life. So, thanks for giving me your views and kudos to the girls. Yeah, I just briefly, I will be in New Orleans next week for National School Board Association. We have a board meeting, three meetings, and we have our annual conference. So, this is a big conference, we have about five thousand attendees from all over the country and Canada.
Yes, as I mentioned, I will be next week at a conference in New Orleans for National School Board Association. I have a board meeting as a member of NSBA Board of Directors and we have the annual conference, so we have about five thousand attendees from all over the United States and also from Canada attending. So, this will be a very, very large conference. And, you know, these are the conferences that we have ed leaders from across the country that come, learn about best practices and governance and gain insights into, into the districts and public education across the country. And some of the keynote speakers are Ruby Bridges, Dr. Tim Schreiber, Richard Montañez, and Dr. Eddie Connor. So, this will be a really interesting conference and I will also be presenting two sessions with my colleagues from Kraken and about anti-racist in your district and about working with equity team leaders. So, I'm looking forward to that and so it'll be a great conference. It'll be jam-packed, a lot of work, but it will be definitely a worthwhile event. So, that's it for me. And oh, the other thing is that we had cracked last week, ed committee, as I mentioned last, was the last week of the meeting, they are done. So, with their final bills, they were all done by Friday and April fifteenth is the deadline. And so, you know, they talked, we talked a lot about the budget piece and the hundred and fifty million from last year and leaving the forty million in for all the rest for the magnet schools. So, I had sent to Matt that we would like to send a letter on behalf of the board to the governor. Many districts around the state had done that about supporting the education piece, the education bill going forth and because there is a little bit of consternation and hesitancy between, between the legislature and the governor in terms of what's going to be passed forward. So, so that's where we are with that. We're just, you know, it's a busy time at the Capitol every day and we're just watching and waiting and hoping that nothing gets dropped off from this, the education pieces. And as I mentioned before, you know, we're not advocating for any new mandates because we still have enough on the plate, you know, but, but those that are, that are in the pipeline, you know, we want to know a little bit more about those before they, and there's no guarantee. We're just there to advocate in behalf of, you know, of the districts in Connecticut, you know, to help us to go forward. So, so more on that when I get back because a lot will be happening between now and, now and then. And we'll get that letter out if we can. That would be a big help just so that the governor knows that districts around the state, you know, as a collaborative group of, you know, Board of Ed members and superintendents, you know, want to see this pass for the benefit of the kids. So, that's it for me. Can I just say something? So, Lydia, since I won't be there, you know, I like selfies, can you get a picture with Ruby Bridges? That would be, if you can try.
Oh, yes, I will.
That would be really good.
Yes, to get, to get our photos.
That would be good.
Yes, I would do that. Yeah, exactly. We always have, you know, key speaker songs of their drawing and.
I just know her history, you know.
Yeah, really, yes, we do. And of course, the student performances are just incredible. I mean, they are worth just seeing because there's student performances and there are all sorts of, you know, from singing to, to instrumental, to the evening, to drama. And it is quite something, the student performances from all around the country. So, it's definitely going to be one of the highlights.
Thank you. The only thing for me tonight, again, I just want to thank everybody for the last meeting again. Those were tough meetings, but I thought we handled it really well. Love the way we function as a board and just wanted, first of all, to say thank you for all the hard work and discussion that we went through last week. With that said, just wanted to put a reminder that the public hearing on the, on the budget is next week, the third. So, come out and don't throw things at me. But it's out, so please. With that said, our first recommended action is the approval of the central school roof plans and the project manual.
Alright, so I am, Mr. Casey is out of town, tending to a family matter, so while I'm not a director of infrastructure, I'll play one on TV tonight. And just, these are motions that are required for some projects that are happening this summer that have previously been on the Capitol list. Two roofing projects, a central school partial roofing project at Terriffill School. Each project requires three motions. As you know, those of you who have been on the board a long time, a lot of the process of state reimbursement requires that formal motions have been taken by the Board of Education. So, these are going to mirror each other for the two projects. And we are working with the same construction company on both that we've worked with many times. Al Jakunski was most recently with the Simsbury High School Roofing Project. He's been a great collaborator with us. He has been a great collaborator with our Public Building Committee, so they like it when Al wins these projects and if they tend to go under budget, on time, and very smoothly. So, the motions are basically that to approve first the plans and project manual, they are available for any board members' reviews if you want them. If you have an intense interest in architectural drawings of girders and things like that, I can make them available to you, but that is one of the motions that has to happen. Then there's a motion approving a cost estimate in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the central school project and then about a million dollars for the Terriffill Roofing Project. And then lastly, it's to approve that the superintendent and the board chair sign the required paperwork for the Office of School Grants and Review at the state. There's a typo in there for whoever's going to read this one. It's in the second line before the number SCGO42, that it's, it should be form and not from. It's authorizing them to sign a form and there's a typo in there. So, you got a little cumbersome of that, we have to make three motions for each project, but if there's no questions, we can get started.
So, they can't take them all together, like you can't have the three?
No, you're supposed to read them separately if we could.
So, Neil, regarding each, I know you said the documents are there, but do you have the, I mean, for the plans and when they're going to start?
This, as soon as school closes this summer.
Okay.
Or somebody read the motion?
Yeah, we're going to start with central school on these motions.
I don't mind reading the first. Move to approve the final plans and project manual dated March fourth, 2024, prepared by Jakunski Humes Architects LLC for the central school re-roofing and related work project.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, move to approve the central school re-roofing project budget cost estimate dated March fifteenth, 2024, prepared by Jakunski Humes Architects LLC, the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-three.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And then move to approve the superintendent, Matthew T. Curtis, and board chair, Jeff Tyndall, to sign the Department of Administrative Services Form SCGO42 to request a review of the final plans and project manual prepared by Jakunski Humes Architects LLC for the central school re-roofing and related work project.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And then just to be, to be specific about this, central school here, this is re-roofing of what we call sort of the primary wing over in this area, which was a nineteen ninety-six addition, so we got good use out of it. Terriffill, these three motions now coming up are most of the old building at Terriffill, but not the portions that were added where like the main office and the cafeteria are, those are newer. So, it's the rest of the older part of the building, which is, we have almost a hundred year anniversary coming up. More to come on that Terriffill, old part of the. Pardon?
The nineteen ninety-sixth central, what was it, Terriffill?
I don't know when the roof was last done. I'd have to consult with Jason on that, yeah.
So, I move to approve the final plans and project manual dated November tenth, 2023, prepared by Jakunski Humes Architects LLC for the Terriffill School Re-roofing and Related Work Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
I move to approve the Terriffill School Re-roofing Project Budget Cost Estimate dated June twenty-six, 2023, prepared by Jakunski Humes Architects LLC in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And I move to approve the superintendent, Matthew T. Curtis, and board chair, Jeff Tyndall, to sign the Department of Administration Services for SCGO42 to request a review of the final plans and project manual prepared by Jakunski Humes Architect LLC for the Terriffill School Re-roofing and Related Works.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, and thanks to those motions, we are in line to receive about thirty-five percent reimbursement from the state on these projects, so. Made it through.
Cancellation of the board. Yeah, yeah, it's during school recess, we're basically going to cancel that meeting because many people are unavailable. So, there's a motion on the table to cancel the April ninth, 2024 Board of Education.
Which would, which would then put our next meeting at what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
The public hearing, maybe a second public hearing.
Sort of public hearing before I think, is what you're saying?
Public hearing is on the third and then they have a date for a second public hearing on the sixteenth that they usually utilize here.
I'll make a motion, move to cancel the Board of Education meeting schedule on April ninth, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Good.
Yes, I am going to hand that one over to Sue, to Tia.
Terrific, and I'm going to invite Shannon Danyay, who is our K-12 department supervisor of the visual arts, up to the table. There are many aspects of my job that I love, but near the top is working with smart, caring leaders around curriculum and instruction. And Shannon has been one that has been locked arm-in-arm with me specifically over this year. There is so many things to celebrate as we offer a very robust and rigorous visual arts compilation to our students, K-12. So, I've asked Shannon to come here tonight and to share what has been going on or what has been going on and specifically what her leadership priorities are, both staff and student achievements. And unbelievably, you're just going to get a glimpse at the many achievements of both staff and students here in the visual arts program of Simsbury. Some current challenges, financial implications of this programming, and supports that she may need. So, you will see different kind of pieces of art, student work throughout this presentation. We're not going to comment on them, but just take them in because they are magnificent. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Shannon.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to share the report. I am so proud of our, of the work that our students and our teachers have, have done and, and we will begin. So, I'm starting with leadership priorities. Of course, the vision of the graduate are the attributes that we are working to develop in students to be able to perform their mastery-based learning, which we call capstone in Simsbury. And we have some exemplary examples. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are priority, especially in the update and review of our curriculum. It is important for students to be able to see themselves reflected in the art curriculum. The K-12 vertical articulation of our two-dimensional, three-dimensional technology strands and always focusing on what's current and continuous improvement in student learning and, and progress. So, we begin with capstone. The vision of the graduate inquiry is at the root of our K-12 programming. I'm proud to share that our, our K-12 art teachers have all developed goals that they are monitoring student growth, that are utilizing the indicators from our capstone rubric so that we can develop those and collaborate on strategies and ways to improve student abilities in those areas. The students have the option at the high school level to go through various paths to demonstrate mastery in whatever they select to be their passion in art. And there's very, there's so many choices. We have about ten different media choices with individual paths and the student interest is at the center. For the upcoming 2024, 25 year, we actually, that number, we have about fifty-two students that are enrolled in AP and capstone classes in the art program and that's really exciting. We, another highlight that I wanted to share was our DEIB week that's coming up. We have, all the teachers in the art department are going to be supporting student-led professional development sessions. The students have the confidence and empowerment to be able to lead these sessions to their peers with the support of their teachers. And we also have central school teacher Tara Harrison coming up to lead a session as well. So, throughout our art curriculum and educational experience, students have, are developing digital portfolios that develop, that demonstrate process and product, which is very exciting. And these are links and you can find them on our Simsbury Public Schools website to Artsonia, which is a online platform of student presentation. And one new feature this year is that the students can now record their voice, so they can record their voice talking through their process and their intentions and their artwork. And you can read about their artist statements. At the high school level, we primarily use Google as a format to document process and students are developing those process and product portfolios at, in every single class at the art show or at, in the art program. And it's preparing them wonderfully for capstone.
So, a quick little personal story. So, this is pretty amazing from the student lens. So, even my daughters will look at their former work from like third grade and go, oh my goodness, I didn't know anything about blending when I was a third grader and watch. So, they can actually see their progression in that process, in that skill, and just in the product. It's very cool.
It's a great connector too because through the Artsonia format, families can share all over the world with, with people, so that's, that's wonderful. So, we move on to our staff achievements and I just wanted to highlight Christian Stourds' work because he is from central school. And you will be hopefully meeting him at the, at some of the work that I integrated here was work that is framed, that is the gift from the board to families and students, so his work is, is shared here. So, Simsbury teachers are leaders in the state and nationally. I'm proud to share that four of us presented at the CAA conference this year. And again, to highlight Tara Harrison, who is the central school art teacher, is a member, a committee member of Adding Voices, which prioritizes DEIB. And she not only leads national sessions that are virtual, but she's also led multiple sessions here for our teachers and she's an amazing contributor. Here's another example of, of teachers and students being leaders in the state. So, we have Hannah Granger, Megan Lavoy, who is a teacher at the high school, myself. We, we led a session last year in the first year of our capstone experience when it came to life for the Connecticut Art Administrators Association. And we're very much recognized as leaders in the state for mastery-based learning credit in the arts. Had, and we got great feedback and just of, I'm sure many of you know Hannah, but she not, she did her capstone in visual art and performing arts. And this is just a little peek into that. As we move on, this is, we have a unified art class and it's wonderful. And it is a collaboration between our artists and students and, and Kristi Arbizman is the teacher of that class and she's fabulous. She was recognized this year as the outstanding special needs arts educator in the state of Connecticut. And she, and this is here, here she is with her class. And I just wanted to share with you also, the artwork to the right is a collaboration between Peyton Ofsuric and Caitlin Wat, or Peyton Ofsuric, I'm sorry, and Caitlin Watson. And you will also be seeing this as a first exhibition of collaborative efforts as a framed work at the Board of Ed at our celebration. And so, that's really exciting. Our teachers are all practicing artists. They love what they do and they do what they love. And they have dedicated their practice not only in the professional community, but I just wanted to share that Stephanie Lortano at the high school was accepted to participate in a two-week residency program with a master. with a master class artist in Florida. And she will undoubtedly be bringing back those skills and experiences to her classroom to enhance the student experience. And we all, all the secondary teachers put together an application to Windsor Art Center to do a group exhibition at in January twenty twenty five, and it was accepted. And it's really a great opportunity for us to be in the professional world, to be able to share with the community and make connections and 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 lead our students into that professional practice. So now to why we are all here, our wonderful student achievements. I decided to organize some of the celebrations, local, state, and national. So the Simsbury Camera Club does a beautiful job selecting artwork. They exhibit the work, they select work out of hundreds of pieces. Simsbury did did Simsbury High School did amazing. And they do a beautiful job really being careful about their selection. And when the students are invited to be celebrated, they interview them. They ask about about their technical approach, their conceptual approach. And these kids were prepared because they've been practicing talking through their process. As we move on to the state recognition, which is our scholastic art awards, we had a great number of students at the high school and the middle school that were exhibited. And one thing I really wanted to highlight, and you, there's also a presentation that's online. But out of all of the awards, there was about eleven different media and process selections that received high recognition. So you can see that we have a very comprehensive program. We offer a lot of options, and we really work hard to make sure that kids have choice and voice through their work. And we had best in show in the state of Connecticut for film and animation, and best in show for sculpture. And you can see the recognition of the scholarship awards that were given to students for the University of Hartford. And so this was great work.
Last year's slide, we were all last year's seniors.
These are this year's, this is this year's, these are last year because the Simsbury Camera Club were preparing it that show. I should have mentioned that. I I went. Yes, this, so this, so Simsbury Camera Club is that competition due date is the end of April. So we're preparing that now. And so I went through just to to share the breadth of opportunity that students have. And this was this year. And this is, okay, so can the Castle Award recipients is a K to twelve celebration where students are recognized for their dedication, their citizenship in the art classroom, their high level of skill and conceptual development. And I just wanted to also share that Beth is there with her students from Central School. So that was wonderful. This is also, I'm actually bringing this work to the Madatuck Museum, but this is a celebration from last year and a big highlight. This is Nana Poku. He was recognized nationally. His work was selected by Johanna Hayes to represent Connecticut in at the at in DC. So him and his mom got to go. They framed his artwork, and he was honored there. And so the students are now prepared. And we had other work celebrated at the Madatuck Museum. So I told them all, you build your resume. You have work exhibited. They have to do this formal process of loaning their work to to the museum, and it's really a beautiful exhibition. So we're prepping that now, and that will be delivered this week. But that's Nana, and again, recognized nationally, which is great. And this was just another, this was recently earlier this month, an opportunity through the National Arts Program where teachers and students are exhibiting together. We have a wonderful community throughout our K to twelve program. And you can see this is on like two Saturdays ago at at Hartford Art Space. And the kids were thrilled, their families, and the teachers are excited to be there exhibiting together. So now we move to to current challenges. I would like to share that we are so student centered. It's it's a creative process creating the schedule for students in order to for them to elect to get into the classes that they they want to be in in order to prepare them for that mastery based experience in their senior year. And so as I share, we have fifty one students. There's ten different media. There's so many different avenues. And students are at the center of that design. So it's a challenge. With elementary scheduling, the teachers teach K to six. So it's seven classes or seven different preps, different age levels. That's material prep. The age level is is always going to to be a challenge that presents itself. Financial implications, we are a project based discipline. We are primarily creating, even though we have that responding, connecting, and presenting embedded media and hands on experiences at the of what we do. There have been increased costs in materials and shipping. And we are just have a big commitment, especially as you move up to the high school, to offer choice and voice, foster innovation in designing student centered lessons, so.
You know, I I don't think you're emphasizing that enough. You really take a kid's passion and run with it, and you make it work.
Yes.
In a creative way. And when you do that, you're doing a lot of different things as instructors. And you're going broadly, and you're going deeply to make sure that kids have the skills to do amazing things, like actually exhibit their work before they're out of high school, and to be able to compete on a local, a state, and a national level. So, you know, I want to thank your your staff for for being all thanks to all of you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And I think if you asked any teacher, and including myself in the art department, we would all tell you, we just love our jobs so much. And I think part of it is, we never know what's coming. There's this, there's really truly an innovation when a kid comes in. And the kids are, the kids in our classrooms are brilliant. And oftentimes, they're like, we have to stay with them and catch up and do the research or do the have the experiences in summer or keep, we're lifelong learners along with the kids because the majority of what you will see, and I invite each of you to the art show. If you'd love to do a walkthrough with me, I can highlight these these things and bring them to life for you. If you're like, hmm, what does that look like? Let me know, email me, call, or or just come, I'll be there each night. But yes, that, thank you for saying that. And so support needed would be really, we have the best teachers. We have dedicated, caring, compassionate teachers who are skilled in what they do. So keeping those teachers. Also, I have, we have in the music and art department administrative support from Marie De Kemper. She is a partner. She is a, she is an integral part to the success of all of our programming. The dedicated professional development time that is discipline based for K to twelve art depart, for the art department is invaluable. It brings to life and connection what we do. And of course, preserving the professional learning communities, K to twelve, the time that we have that centers around student improvement, student instruction, and and really just kids at the center of our conversation at the work that we do. So we have already celebrated Tara Phil's art show, but there's plenty more here throughout the district. And again, I invite you all, and if you'd like to see this at any level, at the elementary, the middle school, school, or the high school, I'd love to meet with any of you and do a walkthrough. But the teachers work so hard, the kids work so hard, the administrators offer so much support. And I just want to thank you so much for for your continued support and belief and offering a space for kids to 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 create and connect and find the support that they need in connection from each other and from their teachers and and to find their passion. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody?
I have a couple of questions. So mine would be more around, how often is the PD? And then can you talk more about the PLCs?
Our professional learning communities meet regularly at each level where the elementary teachers meet virtually. They they connect around student work, and they are talking about instructional methods, common assessments, curriculum, and and how to keep a connected and unified goals to the district. So and the middle school and the high school are in the same building. So they are teaching oftentimes the same content or courses, but they still have what the essential learning outcomes and curriculum at at the center. So in student work, so they meet. Once a week. Once a week, yes.
And the PD?
Professional development is usually scheduled throughout the year. And we have at least one full day usually in November where the department can go off site and go on location and can experience, go into an art gallery or a museum or work with artists to develop the skill and to connect around the discipline of art. So. And it's always just something that everybody feels kind of brought back to life. And and the department connects, and it and it definitely enhances the classroom experience.
How far have you gone as far as the visits to other museums and whatnot?
We've got, well, over the years, because I've been here for a few years. We've gone to New York, we've gone to Massachusetts, we've gone to Hartford, we've gone to New Britain. We've we we've gone locally, and at times we've had, we've met with other districts in places or sometimes even gone to other districts and had outside people come in so that we could collaborate on the payment and then learn from each other between towns like with Farmington or Glastonan.
And I just say that because, you know, I guess many, a lot of folks may not know, but there's a lot of art history within Connecticut.
Oh, yes.
And throughout the state. I mean, you've been going downstate. So that was kind of why I was asking.
We've, we've had, we've had the wonderful opportunity and support to go local, a little outside of. And and now that so much is online, having gone into, say, like the Massmoka, it's the Museum of Contemporary Art in Massachusetts. We went into that space as a department, had professional development and a tour with a docent. And then we can better bring that to life in our classrooms with students at every single level. And now I think this year, the National Art Honor Society, students are very excited and to visit there as a group.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I have two questions. On like support slide or whatever, the administrative support from Maria, is that full, is she full time with you now? Or is she, I'll point something?
She's shared between the music and art department. Full time between the two departments.
And then on scheduling part, you just mentioned that a conflict with the elementary. Is that something that you can afford on, or is that somewhere we can help? Or how is that?
Well, I just was highlighting the like challenges, and it's always, I mean, it's a challenge. It's 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 hard work and because of the amount of preps and then the sequence of the preps, because it's kindergarten, first, to second, to third, and the age of the of the students, the material preparation. It's always a challenge that we're we are navigating.
I don't know, but anything specific to us that we could, you know, sort of look to help with at some point?
Thank you.
A lot of that work is done with the principals, right? So when we're looking to schedule art, not doing it K, then five, right? Because a kindergarten art class and a fifth grade art class, turning that over, getting it ready in a short amount of time, challenging. So Shannon will work with the building principals to make sure to the greatest degree possible that there's that flow and support.
Probably easier to do in some schools, larger schools, middle school.
Yes, yes. That's a good point, too.
And then totally sort of related, but not related, is the, when Chita mentioned about the PLCs, do, for art, do the elementary ever meet with the middle school? Or is it, you broke it down separately, it's like they were separate?
We, we do have opportunities to meet vertically, and those are great conversations, too. We, we have, while we use EduPlanet as our curriculum documentation, we have different shared artifacts to organize and access resources and assessments and planning documents, K to twelve, in Google. So, yes.
So they don't typically meet as a PLC K eight? But when we have these professional learning and development days, many of them are given to Shannon to do that vertical articulation. So she'll have K twelve, she'll have, she could have K eight, seven, twelve, all working together. So we see that consistency.
And and I just want to add that having lived through this K to twelve supervisory position, it is so, the 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 work that the teachers do to ensure that there's themes and skills that are appropriately built on through the years make such a fabulous impact on the student at the highest level. So if you want to go to an elementary, middle, and a high school tour with me, I could just show you that. But it is, it's, it's great. And unique to, I think, Simsbury's programming. So I'm, I'm very grateful, again, for your time and your support and this opportunity to celebrate and put shine a light on the hard work that the kids and and the students do. And please come to the shows and feel free to reach out anytime and ask questions.
So one, only thing I would have is, as far as the shows and whatnot, how is that pushed out into the community?
That's a great question, too. Well, we, you can follow my Instagram now that we have on our K to twelve department. So we have social media new this year. We have typically sent out communications in the principals. The listserv, the listservs that go out. We post on our website, on our our district website, the information. And we we print posters that are around.
Like in the library?
Do you want to put back on those posters?
Yes, they'll, we'll, we'll print them sometime.
And Shannon, while you're flipping through, the reason I say that is just because, I mean, it's one thing for parents and whatnot, but there's the larger community. Just to have an idea of the great work that we're doing, I think it's always beneficial, you know? And so that's not just, you know, how we get it out to those that don't have kids. And that's why I would say.
Before COVID, we used to have a senior center dinner and then bring them through the art show.
That was, we were just, we, we were just talking about that at the, at the, our, our meeting the other day. And we were talking about communications, like what's the best way to reach the public and to invite and engage the community. So those, any ideas were were open, and we want people, the kids want people. You'll see when you walk through, they'll be ready to talk to you, they'll be standing by their work, like waiting for you to ask a question so that they can share their their journey through the art department.
All of them are amazing, but that high school one is.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yes. It really. It it truly is, but it it wouldn't be that way without the foundation of our elementary program and the middle school program. I'm, I'm so privileged to get to see like all those building blocks put together that.
And I wanted to do a quick shout out. As a parent, who is an overachiever in that, in in part of the Simsbury overachieving parent where everybody wants to save every piece of art all the time under a case time. When my oldest was in elementary school, it got a little out of hand. When my oldest was in elementary school, it got a little out of hand and the parent showed me that she created this book of pictures and she was taking photos so she could throw away stuff and I was like, oh, you're overdoing it, can't do it. Arsonia has been total game changer. It's funny, my life more organized and less competitive.
That's great. The teachers work really, really hard.
I love Arsonia, I think it's fantastic.
To do that, and it's current, it's current platform. And I I I just want to say also in closing that if it didn't come through that, the art department, especially at the high school, is as masterful as it is, we're masters at differentiating, and it's a place for all kids. And we find that avenue. There's not a like a a way to test in, all kids are welcome, we'll start you from where you are, we measure growth, it's not a product oriented goal, and we're really proud of that because we we want kids to find their voice and it looks different for each kid. And so we really find that kids find their place in that way and they find a community and a connection and a passion to bring it hopefully into the world in the future to to help help them appreciate and and feel good about life, so.
Do you ever like survey at the end, like, you know, how many kids are able to continue their art programs in college and stuff?
I think Shannon collects some of that information more informally because the culture that they create is a network. So kids, I shouldn't call them kids, adults will come back, will share, this is what we've done, but we can certainly, we're trying to keep an eye on that data and where students go and the amazing things that they do, so.
We also have a student led vision. We're doing a signing this year for kids that are making commitments to art programs. Danny Toothtaker has come up with a vision and presented at our art department, so I'm hoping that to keep record of that, we'll have connections like the athletics department does in that celebration area, so we'll have that documentation and data as we move forward to. So thank you, thank you for your time. And thank you for the opportunity.
Have a great night, appreciate it.
And as Beth's coming up, I I have to apologize, I totally spaced out in our board communications. I totally didn't reckon, ask the administration, so if there's anything you guys wanted to.
Full day PD on Tuesday, just a reminder to families.
Uh, I'll just continue to report good news about the Latimer Lane project, that they will turn over eleven completed rooms to us next Friday, and the move will take place over April vacation. So they're giving us eleven back, we're turning six over to them to begin interior construction. They're going to take care of those six rooms between April and June, and really, the news continues to be great, and you will get to see it yourself at our late April meeting, which will be held at Latimer Lane, because we're, it's really continues to go well.
Quick budget update, I presented to the Board of Finance at their last meeting a few scenarios to get our tax increase down, decrease the mill rate. In in addition to that, I put forward the proposal that I was talking about, about the CNR, adding that to the budget. Everything was taken in very favorably, so right now it is in the works to be put forth so that we get the extra $700,000 next year.
Great, awesome, thank you, my pleasure, huge thank you to each other. Kate? I told you I'm calling.
Thank you, thanks for coming back to Central School. Great to have you. The lights, one of the benefits is we have cost efficiency. But one of the challenges, they'll go off, but we'll just do some movement and we'll get those back on.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to have you and get to talk about the great work we're doing at Central School. So you can see here, we have a vision statement that's kind of in two years in the making, and I'll talk a little bit about that through my presentation, but it's really something that guides our school community and really has inspired us to achieve our goals kind of post pandemic. You can see the school goals that are related to the district strategic plan, so I'm going to talk about how we've been accelerating unfinished learning and reading for students. We use something I called a buildership practice, I'm going to explain what that is, to enhance our school culture, and I'm going to talk about our amazing teachers and the professional growth that we've worked on this year and the amazing teamwork here at Central School. So really, the story begins with, at the end of every year, we have an opportunity to really reflect on our achievements, our successes and our growth areas, and we always collect feedback from parents and students and teachers. So at the end of last year, looking at the feedback from teachers, the major theme was we haven't had enough professional development for teachers. Teachers were looking for ways to come together more, to meet together, to work as a team, to look at student work, to do a variety of things, to really increase student achievement. And it was driven by some of our achievement data. Our achievement data, post pandemic, our math scores had come up where they were pre pandemic, uh, post pandemic, they had come up, but our reading scores were really flat and our teachers took that to heart, and they really expressed in the end of year surveys the need to come together as a school community. That is working mostly in grade level teams. So Shannon talked about some of the professional development. So the professional development we provide at the school is really using some of our building subs. We go internal, we feel like we have the experts here in the school with our language arts consultant and our math coaches overseen by Betsy Gonzalez, and we really try to provide professional development for teachers, where they're helping plan the agenda, they're working with our coaches to really have, put some plans in place, looking at student data, reflecting on the data, sharing their practices, taking risks, setting up plans to observe each other, and really going about that type of professional learning. So that's been a really huge success this year. It takes a lot of planning, you know, working with Sue and the professional development days that we have at the district level, our building level, and I look at our faculty meeting time, really looking for where can I carve out opportunities for teachers to do that. Shannon also talked about the power of the professional learning community. If you think about during the pandemic, one of the things that we continued to focus on was students' social emotional needs, that was first and foremost for a couple of years, and really you could say some of the tried and true best practices of our professional learning communities kind of got pushed to the side because we were really working on what the needs of the students were and then also what the needs of the teachers were, and really adapting to the six feet apart, three feet apart, sanitizing. So the professional learning community has been, is just a powerful opportunity that thank you to the board for supporting. So again, teachers have one meeting a week, so it's forty five to sixty minutes as a grade level, so grade, fifth grade meets together, fourth grade, and we do, you know, seven grade levels, plus the special ed department has a PLC as well, including the specialist teachers throughout the week. This year, a really exciting piece with working with Katie Crusula is the collaboration with the Special Education Department. This is my second year working with Julie Shanice, she's the Special Education Department supervisor that split between Central School and Latimer. So really Julie and I kind of got to know each other last year, put some great systems and structures together and really hit the ground running. But one of the game changers was the support of a third special ed teacher hired for Central School. This has been an essential piece that is increasing student achievement. Our caseloads are smaller for our special education students, and with those caseloads smaller, we're able to do really creative things with getting that special education teacher into the classroom. We're always looking for the least restrictive environment for our kiddos to make the most success, so that's been a a real focus of our our work this year and it's a continued focus for next year as well. We've got to continue to highlight our professional learning here at Central School. So on the left hand side, I'm going to talk through some of those high leverage moves that we made this year, and the right hand side is really some of the documents and evidence from, we did some reading and some research this year about what does, what are the best practices for small group instruction and reading? Again, our reading scores had been a little flat, so we came together as a school commite uh, community and really read what the current research research is showing. You've heard about the science of reading and some of the changes that are happening happening in the state and the effects of that having in our classroom instruction, and we wanted to be on top of that. So we came together as a school community to really set the expectations, these are teacher created charts, and we have a common understanding of the expectations around small group instruction and reading. This small group instruction professional development, I felt really well. It really clarified what the expectations were for teachers, it gave them support, too. It gave them some things to ground in, it gave some things, some things to talk about. There's new strategy lessons, there's new skill lessons, and I took it to Sue and shared it with Sue, and we were able to take it to the elementary principal group, and the small group professional development session was then shared at all the other four elementary schools. So we have a, and we have a real common practice now about what the expectations are in small group instruction. That is another game changer when we're talking about the support our special education students need in the classroom, because this isn't general ed here in a silo and special ed, this is everybody in together, because we know with our special education students in the classroom, getting the expert instruction from the teacher and getting the differentiation needed from the special ed teacher, we're going to get growth. So some of a, what does the growth look like? So we've got a few reports we look out throughout the year. Our reading data in the fall on one of our assessments was at seventy five percent, kind of flat from kind of where where typical performance is. Our midyear data went up to eighty one percent. So I feel really good about that, the teachers feel great about that, it's just been a really great movement here. Another shout out, you've heard about Think Math, it's the revised Math in Focus program that we're implementing next year. The math coach here is Lisa Smith, and she's been working with, under the direction of Betsy Gonzalez, she's been working with grades one and grade three to pilot that program here. So they've needed some professional development time, they try out lessons, they watch each other teach, they meet together in professional development, they make tweaks, they're kind of making the guide for implementation for next year, and that's happening, of course, at all the schools, but that's going to be a really important piece as we implement that next year. And just some other other ways that we've been coming together as a group to do more professional learning.
So can we, can I project on the, so on the Think Math, is it just here or is it throughout the?
Yeah, Betsy has pilot groups going on at all the elementary schools, so just first and third here, but we've got K five covered, so there'll be a nice structure for next year.
And so when you're pilot though, are, as you're going along, are you looking and making tweaks or are you going to wait until the end of the year, you know?
No, we're doing it on the go.
Okay.
Yeah, we're really doing it on the go, it's been terrific.
So Betsy's made sure that every grade level is represented in the pilot?
Mm hmm.
And then those teachers come together from all five elementary schools, talk about what's working, talk about what might be difficult at the onset, and they work through that, so the pilot transition is much easier.
Any, any things that have risen to the top that you might want to share?
Student engagement. Student engagement there, it's 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 off the charts, it's really exciting to see. There's a method of using kind of more collaborative work within the model, so there's like big whiteboards that kids are working in with groups, they're reporting out, it's so much more engaging, the teacher's manual is easier for teachers to teach, it it's it's really been great, and our third grade scores, the way we have some assessments, our third grade scores are really outpacing where they have in the past year, so we're really excited about that.
And that's interesting, Sue and I were in a meeting at a different school, talking to the math coach there that reported the exact same thing. It's interesting that even in a pilot year, some of the indicators on the data.
Yes.
To people, so that'll be very interesting.
Really exciting.
Yeah, exciting to think about.
So this maybe a stupid question considering what you just said about the outpacing, what are you feeling that the kid is, is the kids understanding it, are they clinging on to it more maybe than than the previous math?
Yeah, yeah, the pedagogy is is the same, but the conceptual piece, the way the instructional design is working, the kids are just more engaged, the way they have the lesson, yeah, the way they have the lesson designed, the kids are more engaged. And really, the teacher resources are excellent, they've really been enhanced, because the Math in Focus we've been using, I can't remember what year that, it's expired now, basically, but it's really much more enhanced now, yeah.
And I think overall, I mean, if they're more engaged, then that means that they'll take, they'll understand the principles, right?
Yes.
Because they're part of it, right? It's not just being taught to, you know, taught to them.
Yes, yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
So obviously, building a compassionate and connected school is such a priority. Back, I'm going to talk at the end of twenty one, twenty two, when we're kind of where we were in the pandemic at that point, it was a really interesting summer to collect feedback from parents and teachers and staff, again, really important data. Parents told us they wanted to be in the school more, they just wanted to come back into the school, so you know, we've worked really hard on our our PTO, then working with a great group of people on the PTO. Kids wanted more things to do at the school, they really wanted to be engaged more, and our teachers also, they were really missing the connections with kids. So it was an interesting summer for me as a leader to really think about what my leadership moves would be coming into the school year, and I came across an article, I think actually Betsy shared the article with me, and it's been from Robin Jackson, and she's an educational researcher and is very practical, and she came up with this idea and this article's about buildership. It's not me creating the plan and coming in and delivering the plan to all of you and trying to get you on board, it's building it together, and it's that simple concept that I brought to the faculty, and we built it together. We asked kids more questions, we asked parents more questions, we got teachers involved. So we spent all of last year building our practices, and we kept saying kind of the phrases, what matters to us? What matters to parents, what matters to kids, what matters to teachers? So we kind of spent the whole year doing that and to, in order to kind of kick that off this year. So this year, we have a couple different structures. So we have student leadership, our kids wanted to be involved in the school, so we have around sixty kids that do a variety of jobs throughout the week.
Awesome.
It's awesome, it's awesome, but they're mostly fifth and sixth graders, honestly, they're they're really fifth and sixth graders, and they need that leadership, we have an after school action club that has fourteen students and and three teachers that lead that. Of course, we went on the buildership, building something, we have a teacher architect team that helps guide me still in that, and again, the active PTO. So this is just an example of some of the things our kids are doing, our fifth and sixth graders. We've always had captains, our captains are our role models and really help us sail at Central School, but you can see, we've got a picture, I don't do morning announcements anymore, our kids do our morning announcements here. Yep, it's really fun, it's funny and it's fun. We have assembly greeters and we have teaching assistants, kids who want to help out in teachers' rooms, so maybe they're going to say, oh, you know, during this time of block, I'm going to go down and spend fifteen minutes in first grade and and help in a teaching way, but we also have literacy buddies. Literacy buddies or math buddies will go down and shoulder to shoulder during the morning block, helping, you can see it right there, helping, you know, one of our younger students read. We have few kids who have signed up to help with the PTO, they support the PTO events, they've helped run our turkey trot, I mean, that's just some of the highlights, but it's it's been a really fun piece to see the school kind of come alive when you're asking kids and teachers and parents what matters to them.
That's great.
It's been really fun. We also have an after school action club, which is very much like the old student council, you know, because the 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 rest of the jobs you can do during the day, but a lot of kids, you know, don't have transportation after school, they've got sports after school, they've got a variety of things. So we have an after school action club, and they really help students, empower them and teach them how to run certain events. So they started off with the Connecticut Medical Center PJ Day, then the kids wanted to do a kindness cart, so there, you can see in the bottom right, they got together, they asked their families, and they brought in goodies and on Valentine's Day went around and gave teachers something from the kindness cart. And on April fifteenth, we are kicking off our, it's a two week campaign called Look for the Good, it it's generated, that's a company from Connecticut, and it's a gratitude campaign. We've done, we've done this campaign before the pandemic and the kids were too little, they don't remember it all, so we're kicking off, the teachers involved in that are kicking that off right after school break, so it's just really made the school come alive.
I just want to applaud you again on how you just just changed. I just, I applaud you again on how you just, just changed the dialogue almost just slightly, right? It's top-down, it's bringing what's important to you, whether it's parents or students, and it just seems like it's all taken off, which is just great.
It's been really fun, it's a really fun year, thank you.
And I think the other point, you know, on the tail end of what Jeff was saying, is the collaboration and giving everybody a voice, right? And, and by doing that, they feel, you know, engaged, like you said.
Connected, yeah.
Yeah, even, I mean, not just the teachers, but the, the students.
The students really do. Had to get some quotes from kids.
Yes.
So, you know, this is kind of what the kids are saying. On the right is what they're getting ready for the gratitude campaign. So the gratitude campaign, we, we have a kickoff assembly, we teach what gratitude means, and then the teachers facilitate each day. There's a certain color sticking out, as you can see, and students write down what they're grateful for. And we create a gratitude wall that goes kind of the length of the hallway. Remember that?
Stop it.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. And there, it, it's, it's so good. It's really, it's really special what they write. Just wanted to highlight the teachers here. This is what a typical professional development session looks like. And I asked the fifth-grade teachers to really talk about what has been important for them this year.
Notice the candy in the center. As Betsy said, this is atypical, you've got to have chocolate.
So it's our math coach kind of on the left here and our three fifth-grade teachers. But that's requires support, right? That requires substitute teachers in providing that support, so it's very much appreciated. I couldn't do this work without my language arts consultant and my math coach. They are outstanding. They are my partners, they're my right and left arm. I meet with them throughout the week, and we, they're just incredible. But what's really helped the past few years is, probably more than a few years, but Betsy's worked with Sue with the teaching and learning team, and it's really helped prioritize the, the work from the district level that really does support then us at the building level. So that's just been a, it's a really nice piece that's working so well.
That alignment's really important, right? So how do we take our district plan, our district goals? What does that really look like in practice at the building level so people don't feel that they're owed and their work feels aligned with making a difference for kids? And that's what it's all about.
So, the special ed piece is so important to us, to make sure we're, we have the right systems and structures in place to move kids, to support kids, to support teachers. So that continues to be a current challenge and a future challenge. My work with the department supervisor, Julie Shanice, the special ed department supervisor, is essential for that work as we're constantly revising and tweaking and looking at and looking for efficiencies. Because as Shannon mentioned, we've got, you know, seven different schedules at the elementary level and so many lunch waves, and it gets, it's very busy scheduling, and we do, we schedule by hand. We schedule every student by hand, there's no program, and, but that's where we can really find the efficiencies. Again, that support that the board has provided with the professional development days to really build teacher capacity, they are motivated, they are great, they are just, I can't say enough about the Central School teachers. And then, you know, next year, we're going to have the SEL curriculum will be, teachers will get professional development on that on April 2nd, and then we'll be trying that out back in the building this year, but that will be kind of kicking off next year along with the Think Math curriculum. So those are just things that we'll constantly talk about with the teaching and learning So some of the financial implications, I'm just so appreciative. So the story of adding a full-time social worker a couple of years ago, the department supervisor this past year, and a third special education teacher, it's the right support. It is terrific. It is, I'm not asking for any more. No, it's really great. It's really, we have the pieces in place, we have the people in place, we have the right people. It's, it's really been terrific, so I really appreciate that. Again, that professional development will continue with. And our building, update and modernize the school. So you're in the 1954 section? We have a 1913 section, and we have a 1996 section. So it just presents challenges. It really does. Many, many things are outdated, carpets need to be replaced, painting needs to happen. We're getting some new electrical, very, like in the next month or so.
Yeah, significant.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting some nice new electrical. The front bus circle is an issue, it's not wide enough at all. There's a traffic jam every day that goes down Masako at our dismissal time. You know, the school wasn't built in 1997 for the amount of cars that we have, the families that are bringing kids to school, the number of buses we have, the number of vans in it. That's a real pressure point for this school.
Can I add one on your staffing?
Sure.
One of the other things that's happened favorably for Central School is that for the first five, six years that I, in this role, worked with Beth, this is where a little increase in enrollment helped smooth things out. There was this constant battle that one grade level would have two sections, and then the next would have three sections here at Central School. So there was this unevenness, you were always trading teachers. And what's happened over time is that with the increase in elementary enrollment, it's a consistent three in every grade here. It, it allows, you know, just consistency. But it also is allowed for very favorable class sizes here in that they're within the guidelines, but they're not very large, and it's really been advantageous over the last few years.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that out, yeah, yeah, it really has.
Can I ask you a question on that? You know, first from some of the other schools, that space, physical space is an issue because of crowded, let's just say. How, I mean, obviously you spoke to just the whole nature of the physical plan here, but do you feel you have just enough space?
I do.
For the kids, for the program?
Yeah, I do. I couldn't add one more classroom, though. There'd be nowhere to add the classroom. Every, every classroom is filled. Every office area, we've converted closets into offices, every, we're good right now. We have an interesting, I call it the lower level, not the basement, it's the lower level. It's interesting.
The garden level.
The garden level, sometimes I refer to it as the garden level. That, we still use it because our cafeteria is on the lower level, and there's a couple of spaces there. If we had to get bigger, those spaces would need some renovation. There's one big space we use already, but it's, it would need, it, you know, it's usable, but we have some room to grow if we needed to in, in that lower level. So really, just continued focus on the priorities that I've talked about is really what I'm thinking about. And the collaboration, like I said, with Sue and the teaching and learning team has been a really, really helpful structure that supports us and supports our building principles. And again, like the, the connection that we have with Matt and Sue and Neil, we can pick up the phone and call them, I'm incredibly grateful, like we can just call them and they're here for us if we need support. So I'm just really, really grateful for that.
Thank you. I mean, it's just, you know, one thing I'm picking up on in this presentation is really nice to see is as we've moved away focusing on the pandemic era, we're back to instruction.
Yes.
You speak instruction like nobody else, right? It, it's your gift. And it's just nice to see that the time again has matched up with our ability to focus on those things the right way and start to move kids and focus our priorities there. So.
Thank you.
Kudos to you, Ben.
Thank you. One last nugget. Today is the 10th year that I was appointed Board of Ed, by the Board of Ed to be principal. 10 years ago today. We are at 10th year, right?
It's perfect.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
That's great. Great.
I just want to close and say, I mean, the other thing to me that's really good to hear is that the changes that we've made have made an impact. I mean, I'm like sitting here getting chills, you know what I mean? So it's really.
Yeah, no, it's a great point, right? Because we, we'll add a position here and there, and before, we don't necessarily hear kind of what happens next. And so that's really appreciated, those comments.
Yes, yes.
Uh, what more? Audit report.
Oh, our riveting financial report. So this is the annual report out on the audit for fiscal year '23. We've completed the audit, we received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion possible. There were no findings related to our internal controls. So all good news there, very clean audit. They also audited our federal and state grants. Again, we had the same opinion, a clean audit, unmodified opinion, and then no findings on internal controls related to our grants as well. Down in the middle of the page, you can see that our surplus was just over, we almost broke even, about $3,000. You'll know from previous report outs that our surplus at the end of the year is typically two to three million. This is after our transfers out. So any surpluses that come from the end-of-the-year budget, we typically transfer out into our capital reserve or other areas that need it at that time. So that $3,000 is after those transfers have been, been completed. All the way down, you'll see our unassigned general fund balance available for appropriation as of 7/1/23. It's about just shy of that $19 million mark, and this is about 16% of expenditures. Our policy says that we should be in between 15% to 17% to stay in line with our AAA-rated communities, and we have hit that target. Anything above and beyond that goes into our capital reserve fund. On the next page, just related to the management advisory letter for the Board of Education, our accounting procedures manual, our fraud risk assessment, these were both included last year, and we had reported out last year that they will be completed during 2024. That is still the case. The accounting and procedures manual will likely be completed by the end of the year. And then the fraud risk assessment, hopefully sometime this summer. We got the funding for that during the fiscal year '24 budget process, and RFP will be issued probably between April and May. The auditors did come out and do a full presentation to the Board of Finance at that meeting on March 21st. So if you can't sleep at night and you want to take a look at that meeting, there is a full report on the entire audit. That's all I got.
Those nights where you're up, you fall asleep.
That's all right. You can hear the whole audit.
Thank you. That's, I make fun of it, but it's, it's critically important, so.
Jeff, can I?
Yes.
This question. Have you had any issues of fraud through the years or anything that stood out? Because it's always good to have a risk assessment. Has anything occurred that's notable on the fraud front that you remember or recall?
Nothing since I've been here. I don't know about before that, but since I've been here, there hasn't been anything. And then the auditors do, do procedures every year that are not within line with, they do on a yearly basis. So they do, I forget the name of it offhand, but they do procedures where you don't know that what they're going to do. So they'll pick a different area every year, they'll do tax collection, they'll do off-site receivables, do things of that nature, but they won't tell you what they're going to test. So they do do some fraud procedures during the year. And then that fraud risk assessment that we are going to have, they will report out on some internal controls that we can do better to tighten things up, or if we're doing well, they'll report out on that. You're welcome.
So I have a separate question, just for clarification to make sure. So the numbers that are here are town-related or?
It's town and board.
Okay. And so my question, and that's why I'm going to say it's separated from this properly, is when will we, when will you have a year-to-date on what, where we are with that budget and expenses?
So we do the quarterly, the next quarterly will be the end of, so yours will probably be, what, April 23rd? We'll report out at the next quarterly?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Maybe the most questions we've had on the audit report.
I know, it's so exciting.
And we're still done by 8 o'clock.
The next board meeting is the 23rd, as has been mentioned. The location is now at Latimer, it's been changed from Toon. So now it's at Latimer, as we mentioned.
And for your planning purposes, we will have a tour beforehand.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask.
Coming six?
Coming six?
Yeah, tour in six. Yeah, great. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, all right.